All right, let's get this meeting started. Can you guys hear me okay? Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
All right. So uh. Let's get, let's get the meeting started, right? I'm not going to talk much about the market. The reason I'm doing the meeting was because I had a great question today in the room and that just, you know, motivated me, motivated me to get on the Zoom meeting is just to ask, just to answer some of these questions, but let's talk about the market for a brief second. What we have here is the 30 minute timeframe across the board for the SPY, the Q's, the Dow Jones, the semis, the biotech index, and this is the IWM. I typically do not look at the 30 minute timeframe on the indices during regular market conditions. I usually only pay attention to the short term timeframe when the market is in a correction, in a bear market, or extremely, extremely overbought. And usually what I've been doing, if you've been watching some of these meetings, the last few meetings, the 65 day moving average is the five day moving average. When we are below in a corrective market, the bears are in control, as you can see here. And then once we finally get above, the bulls have to court, have to have the ball on their side, they're playing offense. And over the last couple of days, we've seen a lot of chop. And finally, uh, we got below it uh, yesterday, and we had a nice rebound right to the five day moving average, and now we're selling off the same thing with the Q's, the same thing with the Dow Jones, the SMH and XBI, which are considered risk on sectors. They're still above, but as you can see here, we rallied right to those averages and we sold off. So we just have to be aware of that. I mean, we had a tremendous rally since the bottom here. Punch up the SPY. I mean, it's amazing. So we had a a 29, 30% rally in a matter of 18 days. Okay? How quick we forget that we just went through this not too long ago. And now we're going straight up. We were in pure panic mode. Now we, we have a fear of missing out. Now the stocks are running, we, you know, and they're, they're just going, this is an incredible market. Years ago, many years ago, they said, you take the elevator down, you take the stairs up, now we're taking the elevator right back up. Okay, because we're going up, absolutely no resistance, maybe a little bit here, but we went straight up in the street line. We're talking about 30%. What took us a year to make a year ago in 2019, right over here, we made in three weeks, okay? But more importantly, what I want you guys to do is to ask as many questions as you want, so that way we can try to make this as informative as possible. What I'm going to do is the way I start my mornings is very simply, I go to this page over here. I have the flag stocks, which means that these are stocks that throughout the day, as I'm going through charts, I might, I'm going through charts, I might see something that looks attractive, but not quite ready, so I'll flag it, so that way I don't lose it. Just give me a second here. So I'll flag it just in case I don't lose it, but you know, here is Apron, Blue Apron, which has been going sideways for a while. It looks good, another inside day, it's amazing. So that's my, this is my flag, so I'm, I'll go through this list, like for example, I mentioned the other day, RRC as a, as an oil name that's been trading sideways for a long time, and you've heard the saying, the bigger the base, the higher into space it goes. And very simply, what we see here, when you see this type of chart, you're looking for a much bigger move. Clearly, the sellers are in control, and then finally, here at this level, the sellers and buyers find some type of equilibrium, the sellers are running out of supply, and the buyers are now starting to get a little bit more aggressive. And at the very end, before you see the stock jump higher from this base, what you tend to see is a pattern of lower highs and higher, higher highs and higher lows, which is what you're seeing right here. So this is one to watch, by the way, this RRC, which I mentioned the other day, along with SWN, same exact thing. Sellers are in control, buyers here have finally found a value level, and sellers, for the most part, are getting rid of, have no, don't have that much supply left, and what you have, what you have is the buyers taking control slowly but surely, and you can see that with a pattern of higher highs and higher lows. And this is the reason why when people talk about resistance, it's no longer here, because the sellers have been worn out. They probably sold everything, and now the buyers are taking control. So that's that. Then we have the inside day, okay? This is one of the, one of the main scans that we look at, the inside day and the down three days in a row, and the reason why in the short term, within my timeframe, that's zero or one to 10 days, what matters the most is momentum and mean reversion. Inside day is a candle, which is pretty much an indecisive candle. And under the right context, it can be a great candle for shorts and also longs. I usually, I use it primarily for longs. But in a situation like this, like OKTA, this can very easily be a short setup to me. Stock is up 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, roughly about 11 out of 13 days, a little bit overextended. This is probably a good short, I'm not looking to short this, but this is probably a good short candidate going through this flow over here. So this is one of the first scans that I go through. This little yellow arrow, it's very simply, this is a, that just means that these stocks, the volume is at a 10 day low. Now, when you study the A setups, my A setups, which I posted in the room just the other day, I showed a few examples. What you tend to see is the A setup is something like BMRA for me, where you have a stock that's been dead for a very long time, the stock is trading 7,000 shares, 5,000 shares, nothing at all. 30, 31,000 shares is a 20 day moving average, and then suddenly, news comes out. The stock trades 32 million shares here, and it trades roughly 19 million shares here. Okay, so now it's in play. And an A setup will be that the stock will consolidate for 10 to 15 days, and at the very end of the consolidation, what you tend to see is tightness. You see these little tight candles, and they start to tighten up. The volume also starts to contract within those days. And that's usually when the stock is ready for a second move higher. So this is where the inside day comes in. Years ago, there was a guy called Tony, I forget his name, but he wrote a book, but his book was in regards to NR7, which is very similar to inside day, NR7 is pretty much the smallest candle in the last seven days. And it's just very simple, contraction leads to expansion, and typically what you see is a very tight candle on very low volume, and then you get that second move higher. So here, so first, I'll just do this based on which stocks have the lowest volume, because again, it tells me that it's ready to move. Just very simply, and I'm going through this list, I'm looking for some, you know, a good setup. I would consider this RCL a good setup. Down three days in a row, inside day, going through 3574, buy stock 3584, initial stop right over here, 3350. Now, most people, based on what's going on, you might want to avoid this, because you know that, you know, they're probably going out of business, or they're going to have a hard time. So you might avoid that based on what's going on, or based on your beliefs, okay? But this is one of the first scans that I'm going through, you know, RGS, Regis Corporation. Look, this looks good. Some of the ones that I saw today, as I was going through it during the day, was ZM. Okay, as you can see here, also flagged, look at the volume here. And here, for example, if you can see some of these other inside days right over here, look at the volume. Some of these, these inside days here, look at the volume. And typically, when you get the inside day on very low volume, that's usually when the stock is ready to make a move. So here we have Zoom, which I, you know, I like, down four days in a row, inside day today, the only problem that I have with Zoom is that everyone's looking at it, the whole stream is talking about it, and you need a wide stop, in my opinion, even the stop needs to be here, the initial stop needs to be at 138, 138, 36. There's no doubt you can play here, you can play this low, 145, 10. But I just have a hard time getting stopped out when the stock is still trading above the 10 day moving average. So I saw ZM, I saw what was Peloton. Again, very low volume. But again, a lot of eyes on the stock. So this is my second list, right? This is my, my first list, my second list is a down three days in a row. Usually, I'm flagging these based on price, from higher price to lower price, but regardless, this is what I'm doing. Looking for ideas. Now, you can argue that all, all of these 415 names are potential candidates based on this scan. So what I do is if I don't go through this list, I'll just make sure that I do it, I'll do it intraday, where I'm looking at stocks down three days in a row, and then I put this extra filter, today's price is higher than the previous day's high. And then, like for example, I think we had 400 names yesterday that were down three days in a row, and only 50 went through the high. Okay? So the first question here, you still look for a stock going through yesterday's highs after an inside day, yes, yes, that is my trigger. Every single trade idea that I have is going through the previous day high. Okay? Like for example, here, Trill, inside day, buy stop was whatever, 450, 454. So everything's going to, because again, the inside day, you want to buy these stocks, I'm not a big fan of anticipation. Because the reason why, support is only potential support, okay? One of the reasons why I wait until some of these stocks that are down three days in a row, I wait until they have, they change the pattern, because again, three days can turn into four days, four days can turn into five days, six days, seven days, eight days. Every now and then I might anticipate. But a lot of it depends on the market environment, a lot of it depends on what stock it is. For example, I remember doing it with work. We're here, long at 2456, down three days in a row, and that's anticipation. Because it was down three days in a row, or four days here, 420, 43, right over here, 43. But it didn't go to the previous day high. So normally, under that situation, is I am nibbling. If I'm looking to buy 1,000 shares, and I'm anticipating a turn, I'm only buying 250 shares. So an inside day, I know certain people, when they see an inside day, they buy it, and the next day, maybe you get lucky, and maybe you save a couple of cents. But when I'm looking to buy something, 10 cents or 20 cents, shouldn't make a difference. So I'm looking to buy these things as they go through the high. Let me go back. All right, so here, some of the questions, the one question that actually triggered this this meeting was this, which is a great question. Any suggestions about what to do with the last pieces of a trade after you have sold at 10, at plus 10%, plus 15%, plus 20%? Because sometimes they continue to go up, and that's just, and that's going to happen. As a trader, when you are a short term trader, what's going to happen is that you're going to see certain stocks go up 100% after you sell it, and that's just a risk that you take as a short term trader. As a long term investor, you're being paid for volatility risk. So the longer you hold on to something, the more volatility you have to withstand, so you, you're going to get paid for that if it works out. So you have to clarify to yourself, are you a trader, or are you an investor? Okay, and in certain market environments, it's a cycle, it's a circle, and this is never going to change. In certain market environments, momentum really, really catches on. And you're going to have stocks go up, instead of going up three to five days, they'll go up 10 days. Like for example, here, okay? And during this phase, you're going to wish you held on to stocks longer. Just give me a second here. So during this phase, you're going to wish you held on stocks, you know, for, for a longer timeframe. And when you finally do that, then this happens. And here, you end up wishing that you would have sold, you know, when you actually had a chance to sell at a 10% profit. And now you're here, and then the whole thing changes all over again. It's a big circle, okay? And you can go back and search, you know, whether it was the marrow, the weed stocks years ago, right over here, big run up. I know a lot of people who got involved in some of these stocks, they sold them for 20%, and then they would have, they ended up, you know, with seller's remorse, I wish I would have held on. Then you had the Chinese stocks, remember when IQ came out, Lilly, right over here, IQ, the same thing. And this is what happens. So this is when you, when you try to become a long term holder, you have these type of risk here. Even if you look at a recent breakout from Netflix, you know, you want to become a long term holder, which is fine, but you, you know, it's, when you, when you read it in a book, whether you're reading an IBD book, and or you're reading some book that says how I made 17,000 in the market, and they show these charts that go straight up, look. Netflix hits an all time high right over here, 622, 2018. It has a 48% drawdown. I mean, that's tough to handle. Then it goes back up, and it's got another drawdown of roughly 32% or whatever, 35%. And it's been trading sideways for roughly two years. So you need to, you know, clarify whether you're an investor or a trader. For me, for my person, what suits me, I think it's much easier to find 100 stocks where you can make 10% than two stocks where you can make 100%, okay? So what typically happens is that you'll come across stocks like, for example, INO, you know, long at 778, I sold here, some is highest, I think 20, 22%. And then from here, it still goes up 30%. This is going to happen, okay? Also, SDC maybe as well, I sold it here, plus 15, 17 and a half percent, went up a little bit more. And there were some other ones that went up. So the only thing you can do here is that you need to be able to take every single trade and group them together. You can't just point out one or two. Because for, for CODX, same thing. So for every CODX, and also SDC and INO, you also have Lake. Nice 20% move, gives it all back. You also have APT. Nice move right over here, and pretty much gives it all back. And as a short term swing trader, what you're looking to do is you're looking to get involved in this jump higher, four to five days, five to six days, and you're looking to avoid the drawdown and the consolidation. And that's how you're able to compound your money. That's the reason why I'm looking for the market, you know, to, to take out of the market, whatever it gives me within four to five days, and then take that money, move it to something else that's just getting started, and I want to do that over and over and over again. That's what short term trading is for me, and that's what works for me. So if I wanted to do something that's a little bit more long term, then I'm going to look at the weekly charts. Okay, and I'm going to have the same scans, inside day, NR7, down three, three weeks in a row. It's the same exact thing. And that's the reason, when you base your scans based on market structure, based on the way stocks move, you can use that same scan for a longer timeframe, and for even, even for intraday timeframe. So that's the reason why when you, when you study the best performance stocks, what you want to do is you want to see how they move. Okay? I know. Is it going to go higher? Maybe, who knows? But even when you have something like I know, is when you have to take it into consideration, by the way, I almost forgot. Let's say, for example, you bought INO, and when you bought INO, for some reason, you came out with a target of, let's call it here, let's call it $13, your target was $13. You bought the stock at 778. With the stock now at 1171, right? And your stop, let's say, for example, you bought it at 778, and your stop, you put your stop to break even. Right, 780. Now, what's left is 1171 minus $13. You're looking, you're still looking for a $1.25 move to $13. But now your risk is 1171 minus 780. Now you're risking 391 to make $1.70. That's what, that's what you have to take into account when you have targets, that the, that the risk reward ratio on the target changes as the stock moves higher. So here, if you have a $13 price target, you're looking for a $1.30 move, but if your stop loss is, say, for example, still at the 10 day moving average, which is all the way at at 856, the risk reward is no longer there, okay? So this is something you, you have to think about. And not only that, if you wanted to leave a piece, what you want to do is you want to leave a piece for every single stock. Every one of them. Because you don't know which one is going to continue to move higher. You just don't know. So you want to leave a piece on, on everything. And once you leave that piece on, and you have your stop loss, make sure it's good till cancel. If it's a trailing stop loss, make sure it's good till cancel, and just take it off the screen. Because what's going to happen is that the minute you see it move down, you're going to try to, you're going to sell it. And what, and also what's going to happen is that, once the stock has a natural pullback, like this stock can easily have a 20% pullback and still be intact. And what ends up happening is that it happens, and then you're going to say to yourself, I should have taken the profit when I had it. And it's just a big cycle, so you have to have clarity on what it is that you're looking to accomplish. I'm looking to accomplish, you know, anywhere between 10 to 20% on something like this, I want to move it on to the next one, and do the same thing over and over again. You know, in targets, you know, someone asked about targets. In my opinion, you can make up whatever target you want. Targets are made up. I can say that the target here is $19. It's got to get back over here. That's, I can make up that target. It's, that's the, you know, and it can happen, it could not happen. I think targets are made up, you can make whatever target you want. And then targets, for me, are meaningless, because things change. So you, you, you might start with a $15 target, but something changes, and then that target is no longer realistic, okay? Also, people, people talk about, you know, you have to be, I only take a trade if it's a three to one trade, where I'm risking one to make three. I believe also, that's also made up. Because when we put on the trade, we don't know the outcome of the trade. And things change. And as far as swing trading is concerned, the current market environment has a lot to do with the way things are going to work. In certain market environments, swing trading is not going to work that well. In other market environments, you're not going to get that huge move. So you have to look for less. You have to go out there, and instead of going for 20%, maybe go for 10%. In certain market environments, the market is so volatile, that you're going to get three to five day moves in a matter of one day. And that's the reason why I believe it's important that you take a look at your rolling five day watch list, and you keep track of them, and you go through them every day. So that way, you get a chance to see how things are trading. And this can tell you whether or not, you know, how things are moving. Should I be holding on a little bit longer? Should I be selling a little bit quicker? Okay, so this is why, this, this, this gives you more information in regards to the market than the actual indices. Okay, so you want to keep track of these things, of the rolling five day watch list. This is the way I have it. 416, 417, 420, 421, 422. And I also go through these, through this list as well, through all these lists, because sometimes something like VIR on the list on 420, and we actually took it on this trigger, but now it's setting up again. I like the stock, VIR. Another inside day, I like the stock going through 30, 39, 3099, buy stop 3109, and that happens, I'm taking it tomorrow. Okay, so here's a question. Do you enter in automatic buys 10 cents higher than yesterday's high? Nothing is automatic. You know, things change. I mean, order, you know, do, do I want to enter automatically into into a stock, although it's in my list, when we had a huge run higher and we got an $8 gap? No. So, no. So nothing is automatic. And at certain times, right at the open, where you might see a stock where the spread is too wide. All right, sometimes you get some of these large cap names. Something like, for example, a tree, that maybe right at the open, it's going to have a $2 spread. So it's hard, okay? What ends up happening is that I go through, I have my list, and, you know, before, way before 9:30, and before the market opens, I'm going through the list. Okay, and if I can take a name off, I'll take it off. Today, when I was going through the look at this, like for example, here's a perfect example. ICAD. This stock on the list, inside day, look at the volume, 121,000 shares. Okay, the average volume is 274,000, so it traded half, this is, this is it. This is a perfect example. In the morning, this stock had a 40 cent spread. Okay, and I, and I, you know, I haven't, I had an interest in the stock because it's a COVID-19, kind of like a COVID-19 play. And I passed on it because the spread in the morning was roughly about 40 cents. So it's not automatic, okay? And also, since I'm working, I am here, I'm in front of my screens, I'm just going through the names like this in the first 15 minutes, and the minute they trigger, it pops up here on my screen, so every single alert. See, all the alerts here, 6:50 in the morning. All of them at the previous day high. So once the alerts trigger, it gives me more than enough time to put the order in, if I was a working person. And I had no choice, because I can't watch the market at the open, then yes, I would do it automatically. I would set buy stop limits. You can't do buy stops, I would do buy stop limits. And the reason why, you put a buy stop, the order becomes a market order, if the stock gaps up two points, you don't want to pay up $2 for a stock. I will put buy stop limits, CLR, let's say, the buy stop is 1123, I would put 1123 as a buy stop, and the buy stop limit as 1130, 1135. So that way, I'm not paying up. If you're concerned about, you know, getting involved at the open, because over the last few days, the market has been gapping up and going lower, and you can set a time for when that buy stop starts, 9:45, 9:46, 9:47. But believe me when I tell you, I do, my stuff, a lot of it is discretion, so I'm going through it just based on you know, experience. For example, my focus today was the oil names. Those are the first one that I hit automatically, the oil names. Halberin, MUR, PBF. But if I was a working person, and I would do it like that, I would do it automatically. I would set a limit on how many stocks I can buy, which I still do now, whether it's five, and then allow the market to do whatever it is it's got to do. which I still do now, whether it's five, and then allow the market to do whatever it is it's got to do. What percent of original shares you leave in last piece? I don't, I rarely do I leave a last piece. I don't, I just, I just don't. I just don't do it. I, with the weeklies, it's, that's a different story. With the dailies, I don't leave a last piece. And if I were to leave a last piece, maybe twenty percent? Again, because again, I am not concerned about something going up a hundred percent. I'm wanting to get involved with something that's going to give me this short-term move right over here. See that? Right over here, and I want to get rid of it, avoid all this, and get involved with something that's just getting started. And like I said before, you know, just because you hold on to something for the long term, it doesn't mean that it's going to continue to move higher. And you can take any stock. All right, and you, you know, the risk reward ratio is dynamic. You have a stock that goes up twenty, twenty-five percent in a matter of ten days. How much more are you looking for? If you're looking for another twenty percent, how far away is your stop? Okay, because as, as a stock moves higher, as a short-term trader, the risk becomes greater. That's the reason why, you know, when you hold on to something longer, what you have is you have volatility risk. This is volatility risk right here. This is a thirty-six percent pullback. So when you have something like, let's say, for example, I know, again, let's say my target was fifteen dollars a share. Right? Eleven seventy-one minus fifteen divided by eleven seventy-one. That's roughly twenty-eight percent. Right? But this stock can very easily pull back to the ten-day. And that's twenty-eight percent away. So is it worth holding for that extra possible twenty-eight percent? With a potentially having a twenty-eight percent pullback that, and the stock will still be intact? Those are the things that I look at, okay? And you can see that, for example, here. Big move. Where's it going? If you take a look at B M R A, which was almost very similar to I know, was looking to make a big move here, reverse, almost a big move here, reverse. So what you want to do is you want to do a hundred trades. Do the next one hundred trades and leave twenty percent off. And that last twenty percent, either you trail it up or you put a stop at break even. And just see how far it would take you. You're going to have something that are going to reverse and stop you at a break even, and you might have a few that might go up a hundred, two hundred percent. No one knows, but in order for you to do that, you got to do it for the next fifty to one hundred trades. You can't do one, two, one, two. What percent of shares do you sell at ten percent, fifteen, twenty? Again, that all depends on what's going on with the market. Different environments. If you, if you, if you told me, for example, are we in this market? Okay, then I'm selling a lot sooner. In this market, than if I got a thousand shares in this market like this, with the way things are working now. For example, S D C, what is, no, Trill. Long at four fifty. I did not take any at ten percent. I have a sell order at whatever it is, five seventeen, five eighteen, plus fifteen percent. So because the way these stocks are trading recently, for most of them, I've been waiting to, to take that first profit at fifteen percent. So a lot of it depends on what's going on with the market. In certain market environments, you're going to get a three-to-five-day move that's going to be explosive. In other market environments, you're not going to get that motion. A lot of it has to do with what's going on with the market. That's the reason why situational awareness is extremely important and a rolling five-day watch list is important. But let's say hypothetically, I have a thousand shares of Trill. Right? I'm going to do a hundred shares plus ten percent. I'm going to do two fifty or two hundred shares at plus fifteen percent. I'm going to do five hundred at twenty percent, right? So I'll do it like that. But when you, but then you might come across something like, for example, A P T, which goes from twelve seventy-three, twelve seventy-three minus fourteen sixty-four. It goes up fifteen percent. But it took three days. So if the stock took three days for it to make ten percent, then I had no choice but to start taking a lot off at ten percent. So a lot of it happens with, with, you know, it all depends on what's, what's going on with the stock and how the stock is trading. So if it's on, if it's on the first day and you get that ten percent move, then you can sell very little. But if that ten percent move happens in day three, four, or five, then you, that's, that's what you're going to get. If you notice the market is selling off, do you like to, if you notice the market is selling off, do you like to reduce trade size and, and/or amount of trades? Well, that's not going to happen intraday. I'm not making that decision, that decision intraday. Before the market opens, based on my rolling five-day watch list and where I believe the market is at, I already know beforehand how much I'm willing to risk per trade. I'm not doing that on the fly. So before the market opens, I already know what stocks I'm looking to buy. I already, I already do the, I will do, set the alerts. I already know the buy-stop, I know the sell-stop, and I know exactly how much I'm willing to risk. Today, I had a limit. I limited myself to only buy five stocks. Why? Because my executional last couple of these have been horrible, and I just, I'm just not in tune with the market. I just have not been in tune with the market over the last five, over the last couple of days. It's just getting a little choppy. Things aren't making that much sense to me. So this is all known before the fact. I'm not doing this intraday. I don't, I don't do things on the fly for the most part, and when I do, it usually costs me. Okay? So I know this beforehand. So, for example, the other day right over here, on this Friday, I sold pretty much all my swings. And the reason why, the market had a huge move, and then it was gapping up from a close of two seventy-nine. It was gapping up six points. So here, based on this action, I already know I don't want to get involved with too many new long ideas. So based on that, you know, you can reduce size, you can reduce the amount of trades you're taking. But that's got to be, you got to do this before the market opens. You can't, I think the less things that you, that you do during the day when the market is open, you're seeing all these things blinking, the better off you're going to be. If you see oil names setting up, would you prefer, right, I spoke about this this morning, or I mentioned this this morning, or whatever, whenever it is I put, this morning, I said the same thing. I said, look, there are two sectors out there. The oil sector and the mining sector, they move as one. They move as one. That's one of those sectors where if one stock moves, they all move. So when it comes to those two sectors, typically, I am looking to do the triple or the double ETF instead of instead of the individual names, if I get the opportunity. Let me just see here, for example, here. Many of them are oil names. Okay, O I H also printed an inside day. You can either take the oil stocks individually or just take the O I Hs through yesterday's highs or the energy, or the energy E R X times two. So when it comes to the, to these two sectors, the mining sectors and the gold sector, the mining and the oil sector, they move as one. So if you get the opportunity to buy the triple, I would go with the triple instead of the individual names. The only issue that I have with the E R X today, that most of the setups were in the X O P, the oil and gas exploration. And that's why I took the individual names. But with the ETFs, even with the single oil ETF, that also gives you the opportunity to really load up and buy more because the risk is less. So you can really increase the size a little bit more because, again, you're not going to get the same type of movement as the individual names for the most part. On the flip side, you're not going to get the individual company risk. For shorting, is it better to close those trades out at the end of the day? Again, that depends on the, on the market environment. This morning, I posted something in regards to if you bought the open and you sold the close on the spot, you'd be up twenty-two percent. And if you bought the close and sold the open, you're down six percent. So a lot of it has to do with the market. With what's going on with the market. So again, a lot has to do with the market, and that's how going through charts and going through your rolling five-day watches will tell you. For example, I'm short Twillow and one oh five fifty-six and went down to one hundred five dollars immediately. I did not cover it, and look what happened. Okay? But had that happened here, it would have been a different story. It's a different market environment, okay? So you need to be aware of the market environment, and a lot of those things are dictated based on what's going on. And again, and what you want to do is you want to find, there's no right and wrong. You want to find solutions, okay? If you find that for some reason or another, you're getting stopped out immediately, and then the stocks move higher, maybe you widening that, maybe you, you make that stop a little bit wider. Maybe you sell half at the actual stop intraday, and then maybe the other half, you only sell and stop yourself out if it closes below the stop level. So these are all things that, things change based on market conditions, and all you want to do is find solutions. There's going to be a time where you're going to buy something like A P T. Okay? I like A P T, all right? Made some money here, made some money here, and right over here, I bought it. It does exactly what you want it to do for the most part. It goes up immediately, and then it goes down and breaks, and it doesn't break down, but it hits my stop. And the way I look at some of these trades is that once they break out, they shouldn't look back. And if they do, then chances are that's going to be a loser. Now, this can turn out to be a winner, but that's the way I look at it. And once they, they start to break out, they should not come back. They should work like this, and they should work immediately. That's within my timeframe. If you have a longer timeframe, this is all noise. All right, but this is within my timeframe. And then that's, you know, you have to also think about A P Ts, a Corona play. Corona is in play now. How come the stock hasn't moved yet? They just mentioned the other day that they're going to, you know, we need masks and, and we need whatever, millions of masks, and this stock didn't move. Lake, Lake comes out with their numbers. They weren't great in the middle of a crisis. So these are some of the, these are some of the things that you think about. And for me, like I said, I will buy A P T if it sets up again. It's just a trade. It's irrelevant. Let's see what else I want to talk about. So again, so very simply, different market environments dictates your targets, dictates how much you, you're willing to risk, and dictates how much you're willing to hold or how quickly you sell. But if you're looking to find solutions, again, you can't do it just by, I'm going to hold on to this one and then sell this one. You have to do it through a series of trades. And you can say, look, I'm going to hold the next twenty, the last twenty-five percent. I'm going to put a break-even price, or I'm going to keep it until it breaks the ten-day moving average. And again, in certain market environments, that's going to pay off in a very big way. In other market environments, you're going to wish that you would, you would have sold them when you could have. Okay, so situational awareness, market awareness pays. Okay, for, if we are successful on half of our trades, what is a good percentage average per trade? Average as far as percent-wise? Is that what you mean? Again, it depends. Right? It's not necessarily, it's not necessarily the percentage gain. It's also how quick you, you cut losses. I have a video, Risk Management, that I always post, which I I think the best way to take advantage of the room while you're here is to go through these videos. These two focus pretty much on A setups, inside day momentum. This is the mean reversion, risk management, raising stops. So a lot of it depends. Number one, and how much you're risking dollar-wise. That also makes a difference if your risk is dynamic, where it goes up uncertain, maybe you're risking a thousand now per trade, and in a certain different, in a different market environment, you're only risking five hundred. So it all depends. How quick are you cutting losers? I know guys who have a a two-to-one win ratio but are only right thirty percent, and they, and they break even. I know someone right now that I'm seeing his trades live, I mean, live, every single day. He's a, he's a one-to-one guy. So in other words, for every hundred that he's making, he's losing a hundred. But he's got a win ratio of sixty-seven percent. I don't know how long that's going to last. But he's got a win ratio of sixty-seven percent. And he's profitable. So you have to do those numbers yourself, but again, just focus on how much you're making versus how much you're losing. Because two percent can mean a lot of different things depending on how much you're risking. Okay, so if you got, you have a day trader who makes two percent, that's probably a lot more than what we're making, making fifteen percent, because he's probably putting half of his account into one trade. So see how much money you're putting behind the ideas. But usually, you know, you, you obviously want, if you're making ten percent, you, you don't want to lose more than three percent, but I would go with the dollar values. And take a look at that video about raising stops and cutting losers. Where do you find all the links you just showed? Okay, I'm going to post that. I'm going to post that in the room. I post it almost every day. So I'm going to post that again in the room. Let's see what else we got here. So I don't think there's ever a concrete answer to anything for the most part. I think you just have to find solutions. And I think what's important here is that when you you take the scans and you make them your own and you try to figure out why does he have that scan? What, what's an inside day? What's the big deal about something being down three days in a row? Okay? And then what you want to do is, based on your timeframe, you want to take a look at the best performance stocks within your timeframe. For example, over the last ten days, these are the best performance stocks. There are over a thousand names, a thousand seventeen names that, that are up either eight percent or more or up five dollars or more in the last ten days. This yellow check mark is all the stocks that printed, that were down three days in a row or more and up. So so far, seventy-six. Okay, and then if you do this, let me see if I have here how many printed an inside day. Let's see here. Wow. Okay, so you have two hundred and two names that printed an inside day. And if you go through this every single week, you're going to realize that the scanned stocks down three days in a row or more, you're going to realize that at least twenty-five to thirty percent of them have printed this over here. So we do this. Just give me a second here. You do this, Ameren. It happened here. T D L C. T D O C happened here. EB happened right over here. SDGR happened right over here. TSC happened right over here. So this is how you create scans, just by looking at the best performance stocks, seeing the way they trade. This is how you create a scan. This is how you create your trading strategy. Okay. You want to take a look at how the down three days in a row, how exactly it works. This is my little study layout. You go here, down three days in a row and up today. You put the last five days and you take a look at every single one of them, every single week. I know happened here. So who happened right over here? Ruby right over here. And that's it. And this is how I came up with the whole thing where you have to buy stock through the previous day high. Okay. Cause you don't want to buy something that's down three days in a row. That turns into four, turns into five, turns into six. You want that change of pattern. And then when you go through the, through the list, you're going to realize that when, when the ones that work and work the way they're supposed to work, they don't break the previous day low. They go from a pattern of lower highs and lower lows to higher highs and to higher highs and higher lows. Every single one of them here. One, two, three, four, five. And if you have the patience, you can sell some on the way up and just take that volatility risk and hold on until they break the previous day low. And had we done that or had I done that with I know, we would still be in the trade with a stop right over here at 1032. Now 1032 will be risking 20% or 13%. All right. I don't like taking those, that type of risk, but, but that's, this is how you study. This is how you create your own scans and you get comfortable. PMT right over here. Okay. So you want to study these best performance stocks, what gets them clicking within your timeframe. And what you're going to notice is for the most part that, you know, what matters is momentum and mean reversion. That's what matters. Let me look at this SDGR. We had it here inside day. Volume was really low and it was a fake out. But then it set up again. Has your analysis found that relative strength for, of a down day matters? Has your analysis found that relative strength of a down three day scan in a row matters? If it's high or low? Right now, so when I go through, when I go through this, I haven't been able to find a way to narrow down the list besides the facts from visually. In other words, when I go through them, I just say, okay, so why the IHRT had a huge move? And it's at a 52 week low. T D O C right over here. They work from, from up top, from highs, from lows. And when you, and when you read about mean reversion, what works best in mean reversion are just oversold names. So if I had to lead you in one, in one direction, the more oversold it is, the better the bounce you're going to get when it comes to mean reversion plays, right? But again, you can change it however you want. If you only feel comfortable buying mean reversion plays on big companies, just take a look at the, at the Russell 1,000, 1,000 names. But I haven't been able to found, they, they go up, look, for example, IHRT 52 week low. This is a tremendous move. This is roughly 57%. You're not going to get there from a T D O C. L A D R. You know, same thing. If you're looking for high priced stocks, then you focus in the T D O C Z M. You're not going to get the percentage move, but you'll get the dollar move. So again, my only suggestion is that you study the way stocks move in the short term and you base your scans based on market structure. How do stocks move? We spoke about work the other day. I sold work right over here. And the entire stream stock twits Twitter, we're talking about this breakout. I, I could never understand how, you know, these CMT technical analysts, they just, they're, they're just looking at these previous resistance. And if it goes through, they call that a breakout without taking into consideration where a stock has come from, which matters a lot. This is like, you know, it's no different than, than, you know, if you're sprinting and it's, you know, it's partners and, and you run four miles and the other guy runs, whatever, you run one mile, four times around the track. And then it's, it's who runs three miles the fastest and the other guy, the competitor has three guys. You run one mile, he runs one mile, but then someone starts fresh. So it's important that you realize where a stock has come from. The other day I was watching something and someone was talking about this breakout on the NASDAQ. After the stock goes from here to here. You can call this whatever you want, relative strength, whatever the case may be. This, this type of breakout is going to become a fail breakout. Cause what's going to happen is that you're going to sit through some type of consolidation. So where a stock has come from is extremely important. Do you still enter a setup if earnings is the next day? No, there is no edge with earnings and not for swing trading. You can have an edge based on maybe option activity, right? Maybe, but there's no edge. All right. Because it's, it's earnings is about the reaction. You can have a company, okay, L V S. Okay. L V S reports their numbers, they were horrible, horrible numbers. Stock is up 7%. So I guess maybe it was priced in. You know, who knows? So there's no edge. So, but if you, but if you wanted to hold through earnings, then my suggestion is that you hold through earnings for every single stock. You can't pick and choose. So whatever it is that you do when it comes to trading, make sure you have a big enough sample size. So that way you're able to know whether it works or it doesn't work. You've got to have a big enough sample size. Okay. It's like, for example, if I told you guys, who do you choose? Answer this if, if, if you can. We have trader A. Trader A has a 5,000% return. And trader B also has a 5,000% return within the same timeframe. The difference is that trader A, he did it with one trade. Trader B did it with 2,000 trades. Who do you want to go with? Trader A or trader B? All right. So again, just answer, answer, just put it on chat. Trader A 5,000, 5,000% return. When you look at his statement, he did it in one trade, just one trade and he made a 5,000% return. Second guy, same return, 5,000% did it in 2,000, 3,000 trades. Right. B. Right. B. A could have been just an option trade. Maybe the guy got lucky, tells you nothing at all. One trade tells you nothing at all. You've got to do a series of trades. Okay. For example, when I, you know, when I, you know, when I, I play, you know, I play basketball and I'm a good shooter and you always have these little kids, hey, can you make a half court shot? Or can you make, you know, 20 in a row? I'm like, I don't know. But I'll tell you right now, I'll make 20 out of 30. So whatever it is that you do, you got to do it through a series of trades to see if it works or if it doesn't work. And that's the reason why I'm always telling you a series of trades, series of trades. You can't take one trade at a time. You can't say, well, because this stock, you know, I bought it. And when I sold it and went up, I got this, the same thing is going to happen with the next one. It just doesn't work that way. Every trade is random and unique and also vice versa. Just because you bought something, you get stopped out, doesn't mean the next one is not going to work. That's the reason why when I first decided to do this room, and if you look at the pinned tweet, it says the focus of the room is the weekly trades. The weekly trades and the reason why is because the weekly trades, I'm not going to have 11 names on the list. I'm going to have a handful of names that you're able to buy all of them if you wish, because we're just looking at the weekly data and we're not concerned with the day to day noise. But right now the weekly is just not, it's not there yet because of volatility, but it's going to be there. The daily trades are just a bonus, but with the daily trades, I don't want to give you just the recommendations like, you know, for example, you have, I just don't want to give you just a, you've got to be able to, to make it your own. So that way you're able to fish on your own, create your own scan and do this on your own. And then we can all share ideas. Like, you know, some of you guys are putting ideas in the room and, and some of them I take and look here. Space. Inside day, minutes, G, G tech trader put it inside day. Look at the volume, 8.7 million shares. The average volume is 14 million to 20 day volume, 50, 50, average 50 days, 24 million. This is a good setup for me. Okay. So, so this is what, this is what we want in the room. So everyone knows the scans, you can put your own ideas. And if for some reason, you know, I'm busy or you're busy and someone has ideas, all you need to do is just look at the ideas, punch them up like I did with space and say, hey, this fits my criteria. All right. With the weekly trades, you can follow, they're easy to follow. But we're not there yet. That's the reason why when you focus on, you know, you know, day trading rooms, it's just, it's really hard, it's just really hard because you can't do all the trades. You got to learn the scans on your own. You got to make them your own. And the only way to do it is by studying this. I will start studying here. I got the down three days in a row. If you have TC 2000, you can make this into the last 40 days. Okay. You can make it to, into the last 40 days and study all of them to see if you find some, some common themes. Inside day I have here for the last, whatever, five days, you can make into the last 25 days. Okay. And what, what ends up happening is that what you do is you build a, a little pattern library like I do here. And you start to take pictures of these things and study these things. This is the way they're supposed to move. This is what you do. And then once you're able to do this, then you're not going to care about losses because you know that you're going to find the winners. It's just a matter of continuing to do it. You're going to find the winners because you're doing this every week and you know the way it works. You know, you're going to go through, I'm going to go through my losing streaks. Last, I don't even know if I'm up or down this week. I don't know. All I know is that my execution has been horrible. And I, and I, and like I wrote on, on the stream today, I don't care that I sold the stock up 17, 20% and it goes up another 20%. I'm more upset about selling APA beforehand because I was concerned, I was concerning myself too much with the market. Okay. This gets me more upset that I sold this prematurely because of the market than, than, than seeing I know go. This really doesn't bother me unless it only, it only would have bothered me if it would have happened that same day. Okay. Cause I know that I'm going to find, I'm going to find the stocks. I'm going to find them. And they're going to, some, some, some are going to go up, some are not. I'm more upset when I do something that's, when I make a mistake, where I get emotional, if I get emotional, if I sold something for whatever reason, that wasn't the right reason. I got in two yesterday, T W O. Right. 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 I like, look, they're all look good. I mean, this is another, another sector, which by the way, this is a sector that we stay away from because it's not. This is not a, typically this is not a fast moving sector over the last couple of days because they were hurt so much. These stocks are moving in a very big way, but if you look at all these reads, they all look the same. Look at RC. L A D R. Look at MT. ABR, ABR. They all looked the same. Every single one of them. They all look good. But again, and it's, this is just a trade, either, either it works or it doesn't. This is what you need to realize a trade either works or it doesn't. If you can't take short term trades and short term losses quickly, then you're going to have to start with a much wider stop. So that way you're not, if you started with a 20% stop on this trade here, 1450, your stop was would be 1160. Right, right over here. You're giving more room, you're giving, you're giving it more of a chance for it to work out. But then you will have to size it correctly. And then you also, if you take a 20% loser, then you have to deal with that as well. But if you cannot take losses immediately, my suggestion is that you start with a much wider stop or you only take a look at the weekly timeframes or stocks that have been going sideways for a long time, like N R R C, like a SW1, if you can find some of these that have been trading sideways, you get in with a much larger stop. Because the bigger the base, the higher the space it goes, always find the solution. Okay. I got into two at 442. It's been down since. If you were in this, would you start considering a break even or wait until, wait for a longer? Right. So I mean, look, I mean, let's just face rich. 442, 436, the same exact thing. I mean, you're, you're basically flat. So you're, you're, you're flat. And if you got it in 442, let's, let me make the assumption that maybe it was going, maybe through this high, like if, if there was, if this was my setup, my trigger would have been either, you know, this high here or this high here, but whatever, 442 or here, here, maybe, maybe here, right? Maybe here. This stock is still intact. So if I was involved and I got involved right over here, I would still be in this trade. Stock has done nothing wrong, has done nothing wrong. You can have a time, you can have a time stop as well. You can have a time stop where there's four to five days, you can have a time stop. But anytime that you feel that you're not comfortable or maybe something else comes that might be a little bit quicker or faster, always get yourself down to a level where you feel comfortable, sell half. Sell half at discretion and then keep the other half at your regular break even price. If I, I got this trade looks good to me. I mean, this can be on the list tomorrow, going through, you know, 467 with a stop right over here at 390. So that my stock will be here below this low here at 390. And if you don't feel comfortable, it's already been four or five days, it hasn't made a move. Have you sold all of it or you sell half? Always find the solution, always. Like for example, when I, when I'm looking at the mistakes that I did this week, APA, CLR, NRZ, right? NRZ is the same exact setup. Long right over here at 517, it goes up immediately to 557. Doesn't do much here. Market gaps down, but it goes up and I'm looking at the market. I'm not crazy about the market and what do I do? I sell it prematurely. Then after that, the stock goes up 10% from my entry. And like what I wrote on in the room, I said, you know, I made a mistake. I should have sold half. I should have sold half and let the market take me out of the rest. So you always have to find solutions, always have to find solutions to what fits your personality. If it doesn't fit your personality, then it's not going to work. Any other questions, guys? So we covered targets, we covered different market environments. We cover how stocks move. We cover how stocks move. We covered how to. Study the scans. By going over. Every single trade over the last, whatever, 20, 25 days, doing it on a consistent basis. See if you can find some themes. We covered the rolling five day watch list, how much it tells you. How much it tells you. Let me just write down these symbols, T W O. Sting. Right, Sting. Not for me. My timeframe. Is one, whatever, zero to 10 days, whatever, zero to five days. This stock is up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So if you buy it here, it can continue to move higher. Very well can. But chances are that you're going to sit through some type of consolidation. And or pullback. Here, stock goes up, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Pullback. Yeah, I bought the stock in 1216, goes up, pullback. Up, pullback. Up, pullback. So when your timeframe. When you have a short term timeframe, you cannot buy stocks. That are up multiple days in a row. Because you're going to sit through a pullback and if you if you buy this sting, which has an inside day. But this inside day, it's not, this one is not for me on the long bait, on the as far as along, because it's already up four, five, six days in a row. If you buy the stock here. This stock could go down from 25 all the way to 20. And still be technically intact. That's a 20% drawdown. That's a lot. That's a lot. So you're late. I, for me, five to zero to 10 days, you're late to this party. I know Sting, you probably read about it. Natural gas, the tankers, option activity, the option activity. The calls are being bought by the president, the CEO, who's been, who's got a habit of buying. Call options and his own stock has been doing it for a while. And oil, there's a glut. You know, so they need the tankers. I get all that. But within my timeframe, I'm not buying this. And again, go through any single, let's just go through random stocks. This is rare. What was it? Cats, what was cats? This is rare. All these days, when you do something like this, you're going to, look, you chase, you lose. If you have a longer time, if you have a longer timeframe. Then your entries don't matter. But when you look at Sting. And the 10 day moving average is 20% away. For me, that's a little bit too far. And if you look at any stock, just look at every single stock out there, look how they move. And small little burst and then go sideways. And when you look at Netflix. Net net, there's no movement here over the last two years. It's up 1%, 2%. But in the interim, look at these moves. These are, you know, pretty significant moves. Someone today on Twitter said, I don't know what the big deal is. The market is flat. You know, for the last month, has done nothing for the last month. Well. That depends. You can start from here and say it's done nothing at all, or you can start from here and it's up 30%. And even when people talk about relative strength and 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 the strongest stocks. And every time they look at a stock at a 52 week low, they think it's garbage. It's all about timeframes. If you look at Apache in the energy sector. The energy sector is the strongest sector right now in the S and P 500 since its 323 bottom. So on a on a one year basis, Apache looks horrible. It's down 80, 90%. But if you run a momentum scan from the 323 low. This stock is one of the top performers. Hits up 147%. Okay, so. Sting, no, up multiple days in a row. Just go through 1,000 charts. Go through 1,000 charts. Take a look at how stocks move. You know, jot down 100 stocks that are up five days in a row or more. And see. And see what happens. Okay, as one of the short scares that we have is just the opposite. The opposite of of the down three days in a row, where it looks at stocks that are up multi, you know, three days in a row or more than they're down. Alright, and again, in certain market environments, for example, this was considered a breakout. Because it broke this high here. This is a, this is going to be a failed breakout. And there already was. The same thing with, what was the other one? Docu. What happens? So no, don't buy stocks that are multiple days in a row. Any comments on using triple leverage products? Yeah, triples are great for short term trading. They're great. For a trending market. When the market corrects and we have a correction. You're done. You can't have them. For short term trading, they're great. The market goes into a correction, we have a choppy market, you're done. And here's the reason why. Q Q Qs. Are back to the 227. 227 prices right over here. Okay? T Q Q. 227, right over here. Basically 25 points lower. So the Qs are right over here at this level. 227 prices, the T Q Qs, 25 points lower. So no. Short term trading, great. So I'm sure that if you go from here. Q Q Qs. Let's say here from this level. To here, roughly 23%. T Q Q. When things actually settle down, 23, 23%. They are up. 73%. So in a trending market, in a trending market. You're going to get pretty much. You know, dollar for dollar, percent for percent. When we, but when we go into a correction like this, a quick correction like the one we had. It's just not happening. They can't move quick enough. And that's when you get the decay. Okay? Alright, guys. I gotta go. And again, let me just go over, don't chase stocks. Up multiple days in a row. And I know that sting story. I know it. I just, I know it. There's no different than, you know, on the stream about work. Work from home, Slack, blah, blah, blah. This always comes out after the stock has made. After it's up four or five days in a row. And look what happens. The day someone mentioned Costco, same thing. Costco, the lines are crazy. Right over here. This is when you want to, you want to take a look at it after it pulls back. Okay? And again. You want to go through stocks, you want to see how they move, study how they move. And then that would tell you whether you should be buying something that's up. Multiple days in a row or not. And if you look at the mean reversion scan, the mean reversion scan is a. Scan based on market structure. Stocks go down, they tend to bounce. On the flip side, stocks get extended on the way up, they become mean reversion candidates. And obviously, they work better in certain market environments. Than others. But here. You know, this is a short scan, up three days in a row or more. You don't want to be buying something that's already up like this. No matter what the story is, by the time you, by the time it becomes hot in the stream and people are all over it, talking about it, it's just simply too late. I like Zoom, I like Peloton. But. Everyone is on it. And and that makes it a little bit tougher. So here, you don't want to chase these things. You don't. Want to chase stocks that are up multiple days in a row. T N K, see tankers. Alright. Have a good one, guys. Hope you, you rock Frank. Okay, thanks, thanks. Yeah, no problem. Thank you for the questions, by the way. I mean, look, the more questions you 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 give me, the more I'm going to do this. And all I want is for you guys. Whether you stay or you don't stay is just take the scans. And study. What works and what doesn't work on your own. That's the only way you're going to do it. Do it on your own. So that way you can, you know, sit through a correction and every, and then when you go through a correction, you go through a drawdown. It's okay because you're going through it because it's yours. Alright, so. Trading well and be well. Way past my bedtime. And I'll see you guys tomorrow.